Okay, so it's 5:35. I call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Aldo Benavides present.
Esmeralda Solis present.
Mary Hernandez present.
Roberto Samora present.
And Nereda Cantú present. Dr. Science, I do declare a quorum. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Dr. Cantú. Can we all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is our public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments.
Okay, going on to item number five, budget work session number one. First item is review and discussion of Texas Association of School Boards' TASB pay maintenance draft dated March 9, 2023.
Thank you, Dr. Cantú. We have Dr. Martha Villarreal that is going to review that. And Board of Trustees, it is the first tab in your binder. Thank you, Dr. Villarreal.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Good afternoon, Dr. Science, Administration, and community members. This afternoon, I will be reviewing the pay maintenance draft from TASB. You do have your binder. And on page one, as you can see right here, you have a list of the market peers that we're being compared with, and it's a list of 1 through 12. I do want to highlight the district that is number eight, which is For San Juan Alamo. And they have two little asterisks because they did submit a pay schedule, but they did not submit data. Okay, so they're not included in the information that we're going to be reviewing.
Dr. Villarreal, I apologize for interrupting you. We do have our binders, but on the screen, it's a little bit blurry, so I don't know if there's something that you can do. Even though, yes, we do have our binder, but...
Okay, let me try to make it a little bit bigger.
Yes, thank you. Yes, very much so. Thank you.
Moving on to the next page. So on this right here, what you have is key points from the actual study for teachers, librarians, and nurses. Under the teacher demographics, what I do want to point out is for this particular group, which are the teachers, librarians, and nurses, there is an average of 13.3 years of experience. And for the state average, it is 11 years. Now, we do have 50% of the teaching staff that has 13 years of experience or more. Okay, for the new hires, we do have a total of 107 new teachers. And that is composed also of librarians and nurses for the 2223 school year. Now, 59% of the newly hired staff have seven years of teaching experience. As far as the market comparison, what we do have there is, as you all know, the beginning teacher salary is $55,000, which is 3% above the market median. The teacher pay is least competitive to the market by 1% below at the 10 to 15 years of experience. Now, the average teacher salary is 3% above the market. As far as the teacher area stipends, one of the things that I do want to highlight is, as far as our district, the stipends are very competitive, and that's what's being highlighted here. And it's very competitive in the areas of hard-to-fill teaching areas. And they did highlight that $4,000 master degree stipend, which exceeds the market by $1,000. I also want to say that TASB does provide a pay increase model. And they're providing two for the district, a 2%, and also they're providing a second model, which is at 3%. And that's always provided when they provide reports to the district. Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next page, what you're going to be able to see is a histogram. And in this particular page, what I do want to point out right here is that in this histogram, it shows that 50%, or half of our teachers, have 13 years of experience or more. That's basically what it's telling us right here. Moving on to the next graph right here, which is the pie graph. And on this one, it's basically the same data, but what it's showing us is that the majority of our teachers are at the 16 to 20 years, and the 11 to 15 years, right there, for the distribution of our teachers, for teachers, librarian, and nurses. Moving on to the next page, what I do want to highlight here is the zero years of experience. As you can see right here, the information that I highlighted in the key points, we do have 59% of our teachers that are at zero years of experience, which is a total of 63 teachers in itself. And that also includes librarians and nurses, which are very few.
So when it says there in local experiences, does that mean just working here in La Jolla?
That is correct.
So they may have more than zero years' experience?
That is correct. In the next line graph...
Excuse me, Dr. Benavides. Just for the record, Mr. Udesti walked in at 5:41.
Thank you, Ms. Solis.
In this particular line graph right here, which is the teacher salary plan market comparison, the orange line right there is the La Jolla ISD salary. And then you have the blue line right there, which is the local market median. On this page, I want to point out that on the 10-year salary plan compared to the market median, we are slightly below. Otherwise, the La Jolla ISD is above all other salary plans, as you can see right there. On this one, which is the teacher salary plan comparison. And let me just go ahead and describe this table right here. As you can see right there, you have the districts being listed. And then you have the student enrollment. What I do want to say about the student enrollment is that that data was captured throughout the year. There wasn't a specific date that it was captured. Normally, we think about student enrollment, and when the data is captured, we think about snapshot date. That wasn't the case. It was collected throughout the year. So that's an important point right there. You have the number of teachers. When you're looking at the salary for zero years, the way it's outlined here, it's based on the highest salary first, which in this case, Edinburgh is the one that's paying the new teachers the most, with $57,000. And then Rio Grande CISD is the one that's paying the least, with $47,000. And then you see La Jolla ISD, that's listed separate there, that we're able to stand out there when we're looking at data.
This study was done this year, right?
That is correct. March 9. That's when it was given to...
That's when we received it.
It was when we received it. That is correct. One of the things that I do want to point out here, for the zero-year salary, what you're able to see right here is that comparison to the median, we are 103%. So you see the difference of $1,750. So compared to, we pay out $55,000. The median is $53,250. So that is the dollar difference, which is $1,750, right there, as you can see. So here, what we do want to look at is the 10-year and the 15-year salary. As you can see right there, we're below the median by 384 for the 10-year, and 547 for the 15-year. Questions that you might have on this particular slide?
Just that eventually, there will come a time when it would be good to increase the salaries, to make adjustments like for the 10-year and the 15-year, and not just look at the first-year teacher. Because with the first-year teacher, we're not there yet, but we're closer than we are with those 10 and 15.
Absolutely.
But even with the first-year teachers, we're still above the median, right? Except for the 10 and the 15 years.
That is correct. Moving on to the next slide. Looking at the teacher stipend comparison among our market peers, what I do want to go ahead and point out, well, first, let's look at the different stipends, right? On the very top, you're able to see that we're looking at the master's degree for general, right, on the third column right there. Then you're able to see that also we're looking at the market degree for subject area. And then secondary math stipend, secondary science stipend, the special ed general resource, special ed self-contained, bilingual, ESL general, ESL dual, and then national board certified, and then campus assignment. One of the things that I do want to point out here, and something for us to consider, would be, as you can see, we do not provide a stipend for the general resource, right? And as you can see, our market peers are providing a stipend for the special ed resource. So that's something for us to consider. And another thing I do want to point out, not that I'm recommending, or that we're recommending, but there is one district that is providing a national board certification stipend, which is West Loco ISD.
And that one that you just mentioned for the resource teachers, it could be used as a recruitment tool and use ESER III monies. And you could have a stipend for two years, at least for two years. And that could be used as a recruitment, and even if they have to sign an addendum that it's from ESER, that might be good to recruit, because you know how we've had problems having some of those special ed classrooms filled.
So, Dr. Villarreal, it has also come to my attention that the stipend for master's degree teachers at the comprehensive high schools is less than what they, is more than what they get at the specialized high schools. And that at one time, that was because we needed to keep the teachers back in the comprehensive high schools. But I think we've gotten to a point to where there has to be more equity in that. I don't know what they are. It might be like $4,000 and $1,500, but there is a big difference. And we need to check into that and see that there's some equity in it.
There's been conversation around that, Dr. Samora. I know that it's, we continue to have those conversations because I know that we need to continue to recruit teachers at the comprehensive high school as well. I know that, but we are continuing to have those conversations.
But I think that would be very important, that we take care of that.
Okay, thank you so much for your input, and we'll continue to look at that, Dr. Samora. Moving on, any other input as far as stipends? Because I think it's good information for us to look into and continue to have conversations about this.
What is the campus assignment column?
These are individuals that are assigned at campuses to support, maybe campuses that are in need of additional support because of their designation, or campuses that are struggling academically, and there's individuals who are assigned there to support.
Or like if we had Benavides Elementary, and we couldn't find teachers that you decide or you approve a stipend for the staff there, because it's a hard-to-fill campus.
So those are two examples right there. Moving on. Looking at now, at teacher incentive comparison right here. On these right here, one of the things that we are now looking at is the department chair, also for high school, middle school, elementary, and mentor, and sign-on bonuses, and other incentives. The only thing that I do want to point out here is two things, two items right here. And I want to point out the sign-on bonus for McAllen ISD. And then you have us, that we did provide that $1,200 right there for teachers, for all teachers, the first semester. And then McAllen ISD right here, they did provide a $5,000 signing bonus, but that was only for one particular teacher, which is the Hosa teacher, right? So it wasn't for all staff members.
So only one teacher got that $5,000?
Yes.
Well, there was that category of teachers. We don't know how many there is.
So we have, I believe, there's a campus that's considered a health, for science, health profession campus, so they provide it for that particular campus.
And it's because you sometimes need a nurse to teach certain courses, and because nurses get a lot of money on the outside, then you have to give them a hefty stipend so they can come work here. The one that I'm noticing that, and let me see if I'm reading it correctly, that our district doesn't provide, and that's the mentor-teacher. And I know in the study that TEA conducted all throughout this year on how to retain teachers, it really encourages districts to have a good mentor-teacher program by rewarding the mentor. And is this correct, that we're not, that we don't have anything for ours?
That it, well, we do provide a stipend, and it's, we do provide a $500 stipend, Dr. Science, I mean, Dr. Benavides.
Is it possible that they just overlooked and not put it?
Yes, so we do need to look into that to make sure that the correct data is provided. So we'll look into that. So there is a stipend that we do provide, so I'll go back and look into that, Dr. Benavides. But you're right. You're right about supporting also the mentor and mentee.
Well, because of the teacher shortage, and because so many people are not wanting to go into, they're wanting that the mentors be taken care of so they can mentor people, have them stay in the profession.
We'll look into it further. I know that we've had conversations about it at our meetings, but we've talked about what else can we do for our mentors. That was something that was brought up by our coordinators.
So in secondary schools, the great leaders would be the department chairs?
Yes.
And I know the responsibilities of mentors and grade-level leaders are quite extensive. Are they getting also an extra planning period to do the work that needs to be done, providing leadership for their departments or mentoring teachers?
At the middle school?
Both, middle and high school?
So I know that at the middle school, they have, you have a planning period, and then you have what you call a conference period.
So is that for all teachers, or just for the grade-level leaders or chairs?
No, that's for all teachers. I know at the high school, it's different, though. At the high school, when you're looking at elective teachers, they don't have the two periods, like I just explained, at the middle school.
But it's for all teachers also.
Right, but these department chairs and mentors in secondary schools, they're doing their thing, like other teachers are. Plus, then they have the additional responsibilities of their department. And that's why I'm asking, do they have extra time? Or where do they find the time then to do that which is expected of them to do?
Yes, and you're right. They don't have an additional time, separate and apart, to do this particular role.
But that's the purpose for the stipend also.
But the stipends for our teachers are, if it's an elementary department head, it's $500. And a middle school, it's $1,000. And a high school, it's $1,500. Is that correct, or is that...
That is correct.
So in the high school, we would have for all of the content areas, including CTE? Or do we have the CTE director being the one that oversees, or how does that work?
As far as those areas, we do not, we don't have a different one for CTE. No.
So in the business areas, in the arts, in foreign language, and that?
So we would have to look into the breakdown for those, Dr. Samora.
Thank you.
Those are good questions. Moving on to the next the next page, which is actually the first proposed salary plan, which is the 2% increase. So like I mentioned earlier, TASB did provide two proposed plans, which is the 2% and the 3%. At this time, we're not going to go ahead and review that. This is there for you all to go ahead and look into. There's other items that we're going to be looking at that pertain to this, but it's there for you all, since it is part of the report. Administration's not, we're not going to have a plan ready to propose to you all, but it is here for you all to go ahead and review, okay, at your own leisure.
A comment on this one?
Yes.
We have voiced before, and I'll bring it up again. The difference, as we move up in years' experience, is very small. I know everybody would get a $1,200 increase, but when we're moving from 0 to 1 to 2 to 3, notice that it's only $250, $300 in years of experience. And I think that in looking at the overall schedule, salary schedule, in catching up with the 10-years and 20-years experience, maybe we can take a look then, if we can make some adjustments along the way, so that even though we may not be focusing on the lower years' experience, that we can make adjustments there to get us to where we need to be. But that's been a concern that we have voiced here, how there's very little difference between years' experience.
And that's something for us to consider, right? Especially since we already know that we're being affected in the years of experience when it comes to 10 all the way to 10 and 15, right?
This table right here, if you look at, well, it's on the 9th and the 14th. Oh, no, it's on the 10 and the 15 years of experience. It does, aside from the $1,200, which is more or less the 2%, it does have an additional adjustment of 300 in years. So I think that they are already making that recommendation to better, I guess, bridge that in the 15-year. So that, I don't know, that's what you saw, Dr. Benavides?
Well, on the right-hand side, where under experience difference, the amount you have on there, 200, 250, 300, 300, that's the difference between steps or years' experience, right?
I think what you were trying to say, Dr. Samora, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that like a first-year teacher gets 55 to 50, of course, plus the $1,200. But a second-year teacher is 55, 50. So there's very little difference in the differences of the first-year to five-year teacher, you know, like, right there. That's a problem. You're identifying that as a problem. Plus, what they identified, which is the 10-year and the 15-year. So we're talking about two different problems, or two different areas that need to be looked at.
So we may not need to go with a certain amount across the board, but that we need to make adjustments, otherwise those differences will continue.
And that's the thing, that you sometimes have to have an adjustment year, where you adjust the inequities.
Thank you for your input. Moving on to the next page, which is page 14.
14? We skipped...
Yes, because that's the...
3%. I got it. I got it. Slowly but surely.
So now, we're going to go ahead and start our next section, which this one focuses more on the administrative professionals. Is everyone on page 14? Okay, and this one is broken up into three different categories. It's broken up into central administration, campus administration and counselors, and then our professionals. And here, on just the key points, I want to go ahead and just review under central administration. These positions in this particular group are paid, have a 2% above market median. That's one. And the pay range midpoint is 1% above the market. Now, looking at the market comparison, for two positions that are being paid, they're being paid more than 20% above the market, and they were excluded from the group average. So we'll talk a little bit about what does that mean for us as a district, right? Going on to the campus administration and the counselors. So overall, we have positions that are paid 2% above the market median value. And the pay range midpoint is 2% above the market value. And then we do have the pay range midpoint, which is 2% above the average. Moving on to the professionals here, we do have, survey positions are paid 4% above the market value. And then the pay range midpoints are 2% above the market value on average. We do have, in this particular category, eight positions in this group that have different duty days, which is, this is important, because of the duty days, it might affect, or it does affect, the market comparison. So it's something for us to keep in mind when we're reviewing the information. Let's go ahead and move on.
By saying two positions or four positions, we don't mean two individuals?
We do mean two individuals.
You mean two individuals, not teachers or counselors as positions?
Yes, so we mean two positions, which two individuals.
And then, when we look at the charts, then you'll see, and...
Yes. So let's go ahead and move on. And then, and the adjustments, we'll talk a little bit about that in a little bit. Let's go ahead and look at the next page. On this one, which you have a graph on your binder, and also it's being shown in your screen. So here, we're talking about certain positions, right? When you're reading this graph right here, this bar graph, anything, keep in mind that anything above, anything above 12%, it's something for us to really, really look at and consider. So looking at the 0%, anything to the right and above 12%, we really need to look at that and analyze it, okay? Because that means that, honestly, we need to look at the position, the individual, and think about the level of experience that they're bringing into the position. Think about the individual. Is it an individual that is new to the position? Or is it an individual that's been there for a long time, right? Because if it's to the right, and it's more than 12%, then that individual is being highlighted as, he or she might be overpaid.
We're looking at like the top four?
Yes, might be overpaid, bottom line, right? Or it might be justified, right, based on the position, the responsibilities, the level of experience that the individual is bringing to that position, right? So in this case, looking at this, looking at this, looking to those positions to the right, you have certain individuals, executive director for purchasing and warehouse for operations. You have the next one that's there, listed right there as well, director for risk management and employee benefits, right? A director for transportation. And then you have another position there, that's listed there as well. And then you have certain, you have three additional positions listed there as well.
How long have those four positions been over the 12%? Would you know?
I would have to go back and check, Mr. Udesti. Okay, now, the same thing goes for anybody to the left of the 0%, right? Anybody to the left of 0%. And in this case, right, I would say that we have one individual, or not individual, let me correct what I'm saying. One position, right, one position, that we really need to analyze and look into, right? Because looking at what the position requires, right? And, you know, looking at the responsibilities and so forth of that position, because that position, or the person that's there, might be underpaid, right? Because we have one individual that is at 12%. And the question that we should be asking ourselves is, is this individual new to the position? What kind of experience and expertise is this individual bringing to this position? And that's, those are the questions that we need to be asking ourselves. Because like I said earlier, it could be... Because like I said earlier, it could be that the individuals in these positions on both sides are, have a lot of years of experience in those positions, right?
Or not necessarily a lot of years, but for example, in that particular position, the number of people that they have to supervise.
Correct. So we, I have to analyze all of those things before we say, okay, right? Or make a determination also as a, as a district to see, we know there's some decisions that we would have to make, or, you know, just that we could go ahead and ensure that the gap doesn't continue to grow, right? So those, just things for us to consider, right?
So are all of these positions here, then, is this just salary? Or does it include other compensations, like stipends, et cetera?
On this, it does, we are considering stipends, stipends are included. That's a very good question.
So if they're paid a stipend, if anybody is?
Yes, yes, it does include stipends. So that's a very good question, Dr. Samora.
Because I think we would need to take a look at that.
Who gets a stipend? I, I have a question. On, on these positions that are listed here, what position gets a stipend?
I don't think that they
Because I don't think that there's any here that get a stipend.
Yeah.
Maybe, did he mean with benefits? Did you mean, like, benefits included?
I don't think that there
Well, yeah, I don't think that includes
No, there might be maybe one, maybe, maybe, but I, I don't want to respond until I double-check. But otherwise, the majority don't. I'm just unsure on one individual.
But it would, it would not be including health insurance or any of those? It's just salaries?
Base, base salary.
Okay.
But, but otherwise, here, based on this, I don't see anybody that, that gets, receives a stipend. But I could double-check, I mean, I would go back and double, I'll double-check and get back to you all. That way you all can have the accurate information, okay?
And I think the reason Dr. Samora is asking is because on the staffing adjustment plan that we were given, it included the benefits, right?
Yes.
The health benefits and stuff, so that's why we were asking.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I could go ahead and move on. I think that there's two questions on this particular slide that I need to go ahead and get back to you. Mr. Odesti's question and Dr. Samora's question. Okay. Moving on to the market comparison. Now, on this, basically, it, this slide supports the data that we just finished reviewing, okay? So here now, you have the benchmark positions, what was used to compare the positions from our district, right? So for example, let me go ahead and choose, I guess we could choose my position. I think it's here somewhere. And line number, well, that's not a good one, because it's the same one. Let me choose one that's different. I guess number, line number
Well, you just go with the first one, Dr.
Yes, okay. I was trying to
Because it's closer to the headings on the top.
Yes, okay. Line number one, assistant superintendent for CNI, and just because I didn't want to do that, because Mr. Munoz is here. But anyway, assistant superintendent for CNI, right? The benchmark position was chief academic officer, right? And as you can see right there, and so the benchmark position was the chief academic officer, and our title for this position is assistant superintendent for CNI. So that's a difference that I wanted to make. The salary is, you have the salary right there. And then for the, the market salary, right? And the district salary is, you can see right there, the individuals making. And then the district compared to the market is 102%. And then you have the midpoint for the district pay. And then you have the midpoint for the compared to the market, right? So that's really how it works. So compared to the market, it's, compared to the market, it's 104%. But the district salary compared to the market is 102%, okay? Questions that you might have with this one?
Does their educational background, certificates, degrees and so forth make a difference?
No.
Well, they need them to get the job.
Well, they need, oh, yeah, but, but not in this, yeah. You needed to be able to, based on the qualifications, to get hired, right? But when it, when we're looking at the actually, the actual report in itself, they don't take that into consideration.
So would these individuals also, because they have a master's or a doctorate, get stipends, just like teachers do?
Yes, because there is, we do have in our stipends, we do have a stipend for master's and a stipend for the doctorate.
Whether they're, regardless of whether they're teachers or counselors or whatever, everybody then would be entitled to those stipends?
For teachers, there is a stipend for teachers that have masters and
The content.
Yes, and doctorates, so there's, that one's included. And then we do have one for administrators, if they have a doctorate.
So how much is that stipend?
For teachers?
For, for the admins, for example, here?
For the administrators, there's, for the doctorate, it's a $4,000 stipend. No, I mean, $3,000, excuse me, let me correct that.
It's in one of the charts that work in this.
Yes.
Or it was, it was already
It's in the charts.
It was. And I know that we're gonna be reviewing stipends in the next budget work session as well.
Is there a reason why the benchmark positions are directors? And our district titles on some of these, or a lot of these, are executive directors?
It, so what they try to do is they try to compare it to the closest level, the closest title that they have with the market peers.
So these executive directors probably don't exist in other
Correct.
They have different titles, it might be the same level of administrator?
Yes.
But different districts use different titles for it. But they try to match the level.
The level.
Correct. Moving on. Now we're on page 19. So on page 19, what we have here is the campus administration comparison to the market. And here, basically, it's very, very compatible, as you can see right here. The only one that I do want to point out is the director for Hope Academy. This one, it is at negative 12%, okay? For us to just consider.
And we would need to consider the bringing together with West Academy? Is that, no, West Academy doesn't come with this one, it goes
No, 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 no.
With CCC. Yes.
They're on their own, Hope is on their own.
Yes. Okay. Questions about that slide? If not, then we could go ahead and move on to the next slide. And on this one right here, what we have is, again, just, this one right here is just looking, what we want to look at, that I do want to point out here. And we talked about differences in dates and, days, excuse me, and how that could go ahead and create a discrepancy in the days, in the market, right? And how it might affect the market comparison. And this is just a perfect example here, right? So looking at the box here in the bottom, that says benchmark position, and I do want to highlight here, assistant principal high school. District days, we have 207. Compared to the market days, right, to our peers, it's 217, if you can see right there. So the annual rate compared to the market is 105, right? And daily rate compared to the market is 110. So as you can see there, right, we are, we offer less days, right, compared to the, to the market. But looking at the school counselors, the school counselors at the elementary district days, we have 202. And then at the market, it's 193, right? So we're at 106%. And then compared to the market, we're at a hu, I mean, it's 101. So as you can see, the days did affect the percentage there, right? So just something for us to just consider, right?
Do, do we still have associate principals at the high school?
There is, we had, we have one, I believe, we had one. So it's something that, at Juarez Lincoln, we had one, and then I believe we removed the associate principal.
I think it was through attrition.
Through attrition.
So we do not have any? I thought that we had one, or that we had one that was performing the responsibilities of an associate principal.
At Juarez Lincoln High School, we still do.
Are we, yes.
So is there a salary differentiation between assistant principals and associate principals?
I would have to go back and check on that, Dr. Samora, and double-check on the salaries and get back to you on that one.
The, the major difference in those was the number of days, that the assistant principals have less days and the associate principals have more days.
So I think the associates had 26, right?
Yes.
Associate principals
To match the principal.
It's 226 days for instruction. And then the associate principals for discipline is 207 days.
Why the difference?
It goes back to the amount of work that needs to be submitted at the end of the, the school year. So that's basically
You might want to check there with the principal.
Yeah, because the associate principal for discipline, most of the work is done when kids are in, in school. And the amount of reporting that needs to be done after kids are not on campus is very limited. And so that's why that position has less days than, let's say, the associate principal for instruction that has more tasks when kids are gone.
I would just ask that you look at the responsibilities and ask the principal, because sometimes the, the expectations may be expanded once they're in. Just so that there's some equity again between associate principals.
Thank you, Dr. Samora.
And is that the difference, Dr. Science, between the titles? One is, the associate is responsible for discipline? And we only have that at Juarez?
At Juarez Lincoln.
Juarez Lincoln, yes.
And, and that goes back to the population and the scores and the dropout rate at one point that we needed to improve. And so this was justified through that. These positions are funded through Title I, the additional positions.
And what about those, like, you have directors of programs within the high schools? Where are those here?
On
On the list that you just showed us?
Come, we can go back.
Are they commensurate with the assistant principals, deans, associates?
They're commensurate with the assistant principals. And one of the things that we did, for example, when we began the academies, is assistant principals, their duties were kind of adjusted so they could be, for example, academy directors. I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but it is at the same level as assistant principals.
Yeah, what they tend to do, they tend to cluster them together, Dr. Samora?
In, in the TASPI study, because they don't have that. But that's something that's unique, that position is unique to La Jolla ISD. But it is comparable to an assistant principal position at the high school. Call them academy directors. Not all of them, but there's at least one in each high school.
Okay. Any other questions?
I saw LSSPs on the next one, is it here, on this slide also?
Can you just direct us to the page? I know I've been flipping, and which page are you on?
Page 21.
Okay, thank you.
Page 21. On page 21, what we're gonna do is look at now this graph right here. And what, again, the same concept as the other one. We're looking at, where that's 0%, looking at the right, there's two individuals here that, well, not individuals, but positions, that we're looking at. The coordinator for PIMS, as you could see that, that 21%, and then the 17% there, that we should look at a little bit closely and just looking at the roles and responsibilities for that position in itself, okay? And if we look to the left of that 0%, I think we're good there. There's nobody above that 12%.
For the licensed school psychologists, the LSSPs?
Okay.
How are those set up? Do we have them by campus, district, wide, how many do we have? And do we need any more?
I know that that's something that we're working with Mrs. DeGuinness. We would have to ask Mr. Guinness. She hasn't asked for additional positions as far as the LSSPs. Mr. Munoz, any input in reference to that?
I know that we are currently conducting, I guess, like, a self-audit on staffing. And we might need to increase some staffing. I'm not sure if it's LSSP, diagnosticians, or just other special ed counselors.
I just ask that question because now the SEL and, you know, social-emotional learning and the needs of students and mental wellness, that the LSSPs do play a critical part there. And I'm just wondering how many, if we are, have the numbers needed.
Yes.
Three?
They're, they're assigned per area, right?
Yeah, by classroom.
Yeah.
And I know that the staff that she's requested, it has been, as far as instructional assistance, additional instructional assistance, we need teachers. Those are the main, you know, the priority right now, as far as, especially that she's really been focusing on.
Are we participating in either the UTRGV grant or the Region One grant?
Yes.
For which particular thing?
For this particular area, the mental wellness.
Oh, the mental wellness.
Social, emotional.
Do we have any interns from UTRGV? Any interns? There's a grant that, like, 10 districts are participating in, and they have interns, and they're assigned to, you know?
We are gonna be participating in the UTRGV teacher residency program.
There's the residency program, yeah, and then there's the other one, yeah.
We are gonna be participating in that, and it's gonna be, we have several campuses that have been selected. So we'll be reviewing that in the staffing allocation. So looking at this right here, this is what we have, as far as those additional individuals. Before we move on, are we done, or do you all have additional questions before we move on? Dr. Samora, or anybody else?
I just want to echo what Dr. Science was saying in terms of looking at special education and see that we have the staffing required for special ed.
Okay.
Thank you for that support, Dr. Samora.
Thank you. Okay. Looking at the, now looking at this right here, which is the, page 21, Dr. Science.
That's the one we just did.
Okay. So we're ready to move on, then looking at page 22, which basically it's the same information now, but now we're looking at the actual supporting documentation as well.
On the athletic trainers, I guess, because they, they come early, you know, when the kids, the football players and that, because of the difference of days, where it says 19.
Right.
They started with the varsity coaches?
Varsity, yeah.
Yes.
Do we have athletic trainers in the middle school?
No, we do not have athletic trainers there at middle school. I know that that's a topic of conversation that we're having with Mr. Garza. Mes cantú. But yes, the athletic trainers, we, they're at 226 days. That's why we're at, there's that 19 days difference compared to the market.
Were they highlighted, because there's just too many, we have too many days, or why?
That, compared to the market, there's that difference.
Yes.
Yes. That is correct. And then looking at the social workers, compared to the market, we're 20 days less compared to the market, as you're able to see, that's why they were highlighted as well.
Does that mean we're at 186, and others may be on 11 months, or what?
Yes, we're at 187, compared to the, the rest of the districts that they're like around, which is 20 days, you know, you add that they're 207, compared to, to us. Yes. So that is something for us to just look into, right? Because again, it, it affects the market comparison. And also it gives us, you know, insight as to, you know, what our peers are offering the, their, their staff, right?
So when, when you're looking at salaries here, you know, it just came to my mind that we don't know whether it's a 10-month, 11- or 12-month contract.
That, that is true. That, that, that is true. Something for us to go ahead and ask, right?
Yeah, it would be good to know what the length is.
For example, those two positions that are over the 12%, they're, they're receiving additional stipends, or that's just where their salary is right now?
On these two individuals? I would have to look into it, but I, I would, I want to say that I'm 99% sure that it would be a no. That they're not. sure that it would be a no, that they're not, but I would have to look into that to give you a definite answer on that.
What was the question, Mr.?
If, if those two individuals are receiving an extra stipend, as in why are they over the twelve percent?
So moving on to the next slide, it's just, it gives us just at the very bottom the additional table and a summary of our days, which we basically already analyzed it in the previous page. Now moving to page twenty-four, if we continue to look at this right here. One of the things that I do want to point out on this particular slide, because now we're looking at the structured development for administrative education, as you can see right here, you have the, the triangle right there, which is the average market value, you have the square, which is the average district pay, and then you have the proposed midpoint, which is that broken line, and the straight line, which is the current midpoint. The thing that I do want to point out here is just the elementary principles, the average for elementary principles is just slightly below due to some of our, we do have some new principles, right, there, and that's really what's bringing it down somewhat, looking at what their starting pay, you know, was, and that's what, what brought that down there. Okay? And when we looked at it, we tried to determine again experience and what their salary was, and that's really what brought it down right there. That's one of the things that I wanted to point out there. Okay?
Where's the little triangle for that, the average market?
It's right there, the square is actually...
It's underneath.
On it? That's what I thought, because I see a little, okay.
That's just something to look into then. Okay. Now, on this right here, the histogram, if we're looking at the histogram right here, this was just provided for us and that what we could look at, if we look at this proposed pay versus proposed structure, looking at category number two right there, if you look at this, you see these little diamonds right there? This is just the positions that are individuals above the proposed pay range, and we would look at them closely to see, okay, which, which positions are above the proposed pay range. So if and when we would decide to go with any pay, you know, the proposed pay, then we would look at those individuals, right, or positions. Okay. Questions about this? Looking at the proposed administrative education plan here, one of the things to keep in mind is for the proposed plan for administrative education, one of the things that was shared with us is that the pay, pay range or the salary range would, was adjusted by an average of three percent, okay? So, well, that's something for us to keep in mind, that it was adjusted by an average of three percent for some individuals, okay? And the TASPI did say that they would give us a list of who that was affect, who, who was affected by that.
What was the rationale for that adjustment?
Again, basically what we had talked about earlier, that some individuals, we want to avoid some of the pay compression and we want to make sure that for some individuals it was three percent, for other individuals that was one percent, so we want to make sure that some of these individuals are, there's not that huge gap, Mr., Dr. Samora.
And are adjustments being made both upward and downward?
No.
Or is it just upward?
Just upward, so...
So they get the benefit if they're...
Yes. The, the recommendation, honestly, Dr. Samora, that was given to us is for all those individuals that are above that twelve percent, the recommendation was for us to go ahead and do a freeze, that way we could go ahead and the discrepancy does not continue to get larger than what it is or greater than what it is.
And that's what I was going to say, just like we're talking about bringing equity to the teachers, it's the same time, they just, for a few years, don't get the same increase or don't get an increase until you're able to, you know, close the gap.
So they'd be excluded from raises, retention stipends, stipends, and any kind of additional...
That is correct, so there would be a freeze.
That's one way that TASPI recommends that you do like a catch-up year.
That was, that was the recommendation that was made.
And for how many years? Because, I mean, most of them are going to take multiple years.
Well, and this is a study that we do every year, so if we did that one year, then the next year we would see, do we need to do it again?
Correct.
They're within the range.
So it's going to come back every year?
Every year we get a study and...
If you continue to make decisions.
Every year if you don't do anything about it, but if you start addressing it, you'll reduce the number of people that need to be within the range.
So is it documented somewhere that these positions would be frozen? There's a freeze on these positions or these salaries?
Well, it's not, I mean, it's not documented, but if that were the decision of the board that anyone above a certain percent, like let's say, well, thirteen and above, that we were going to freeze those, then it would be documented when we make the decision, yes.
And that's been a recommendation that TASPI has brought year after year, and we've brought it to the board and that has never been accepted, but it has been a recommendation that you catch up people and that you freeze certain positions so that you can have, be as close to the market value as possible with all personnel.
So there was no freeze ever before?
No.
No, we never have done.
There has never been a freeze. It's been, it's been recommended, but it's never been accepted.
Can you explain a little bit of the number of days and salaries that you have there as it relates to those positions, trying to figure out?
Yes, absolutely.
What that means.
So right here, for example, the PEP Life Skill Coach, the calendar days is two hundred and seven, that's how many days they, they actually work, right? That's how you read that right there for every single...
And which other two would apply, the one at the top or the one at the bottom?
Uh, what, what do you mean?
Well, you have two blocks there, one eighty-seven, two oh seven, two seventeen.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah, I was looking at the, the, the position in itself, but if you go over to the next, the next, the next one right there, right, the minimum midpoint and max right there, so you're looking at, let me see, let me go back.
Does the one eighty-seven match the PEP Skills Coach and the, and the one eighty, no, the two oh seven?
The two oh seven.
No, you're not a side-by-side, so let's just take the first one. PEP Life Skills, two oh seven.
The two oh seven. So the two oh seven matches the PEP Life Skill Coach, right? So depending if it's at the minimum, that individual or that position would be at fifty-nine thousand, three dollars, right?
And this is more when, when we are setting a salary?
Correct.
When a person comes in?
Correct.
How do we set the salary?
Correct.
That's what these tables are for.
Yes. And then at the midpoint, it would be at seventy-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen, right? And then the max point would be at eighty-four thousand, thirty-four dollars.
So for the first four positions, those three daily rates or daily, yeah, one eighty-seven, two oh seven, two seventeen on the right, those is what are only applicable to those four positions?
So that we have two right there, right?
That is correct, Dr. Samora.
So that is for those three, and then the second box is for the pay grade two, and then the third box is for pay grade three, and then the fourth box is for pay grade four. That's how you read it. Okay? So, moving on to the next page right there, it's the same, we, now we continue, but now you have your pay grade five, and then you have that box there, and then pay grade six, you have the next, and so forth. So now you go for this particular group, we have all the way to pay grade nine. Okay? Okay. So moving on to... We have the next, structured development administrative management, and basically it's the same concept as the other group, you have our line graphs, our, our graph right there, and as you can see, this is very well aligned, there's not much of a discrepancy here. You do have the director for CNS services right there on pay grade seven, as you can see right there, and then if you go and look at the next slide, right, which is now you have your histogram, one of the things that I do want to point out here, again, you have your diamonds and we're able to see just a visual, right, that we have certain positions that are outliers at the different pay grades, and like again, TASPI will be providing us the list of these individuals that we could easily identify, or list of positions that we could identify, right? That way if at any point, if we need to, based on our decisions, we could go ahead and work with. Okay? Any questions? If not, here we have our pay plan. Okay? And the average adjustment for this particular pay plan is actually one point five percent that was made for certain positions, that way we could make sure that we get them where they need to be. Right? And again, this is the, this is the proposed.
This is one point five percent, what was the other one?
No, the, this is actually, there were, the proposed adjustment, average adjustment, Dr. Benavides, is one point five percent on certain positions.
But what was the one for the previous category?
Oh, okay, the previous is a three percent.
Three percent. That's what I thought I had.
Yes. And it goes all the way, on this particular category goes all the way as well to pay grade nine. Now, we're going to go to page thirty-two, on page thirty-two, we have our paraprofessionals. And just some key points under paraprofessionals, under administrative support here, we, overall in the positions that were surveyed, we do have one percent above the market median value, and then we do have the pay range midpoints, which are two percent above the market on average. Okay? Under the instructional support, we do have some positions that are paid eight percent above the market median, and the pay range midpoints are nine percent above the market. Here, one of the things that I do want to point out is on bullet number four, in the proposed increase in adjustments, on number four, it, bullet four, where it says provide an adjustment to one percent above the medium for any employee who pay is below the pay grade minimum after the general pay increase. So we'll talk a little bit about that in, and once we get to that point, and then also where it reads placement skill adjustment applied to pay grade two through a pay grade five on the administrative support group. So we'll look at certain positions that are being affected and you'll see where they're recommending for us to move them from one particular pay grade to another particular pay grade, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. So moving on. Let's look at certain positions here, and again, same concept, you're able to look at the first three positions there, as you can see, one's at twenty-four percent, another nineteen percent, and another at fifteen percent. And then you have... From, to the left, you have, we have a couple, which is one at seventeen percent and another at fourteen percent. Okay? Questions on this slide?
In this case?
Yes.
The titles do not represent a single position. I mean, it's like, as an individual, they represent a position.
In this case, it represents more than one.
Right.
I'm looking at the bottom ones, I'm not sure about the...
Just taking as an example, assistant superintendent for a secretary, we have more than one assistant superintendent.
That is correct.
So we would have more than one person?
Yes, and it's the average of, you are correct.
The average of the four?
Okay. That is correct. Questions? So let's go ahead and move on now to the next slide, which is right here. Now, these are positions that are compatible to other districts, right? And looking at this right here, one of the things that I do want to point out is we're looking at, compatible to the market, this is the midpoint range, and you're able to see what we are offering these individuals, right? So looking at this right here, you're able to see some of the percentages here, you're able to see the AV technician position at eighty-six percent, you're able to see those positions that are below this, right, below the market, which is eighty-nine percent right here for this particular position, the computer technician, you're able to see the payroll specialist, purchasing specialist, that are below that a hundred percent, right? So those are the ones that we really need to look at closely as well.
On this one, we don't have the amount of days, correct? Or is it further on?
Well, we don't have it here in particular, but there's a one, a breakdown right now that we're going to be able to see the number of days.
Okay, because I know there's, for, for example, the attendance clerks, I know there's a, a difference between, I want to say, elementary and middle school.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's always been a big concern for them.
Questions that you all might have in regards to the, this particular slides? Overall, the district comparison to the market, the district rate compared to the market is at a hundred and one percent, okay? For the midpoint. Okay, so moving on to the next one, as you can see now, you have the minimum, the mark, the market rate, but at the minimum. Okay? And again, you're able to see here the difference, right? Same positions, but now it's at the minimum, and you see some positions that are actually increased, right? Now we, they have the network technician that is a little bit higher, right, but it's more at the minimum. So that's the difference there. Okay, questions? If not, then let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And now you're able to see the actual graph. Okay? And we'll talk a little bit right now when we actually look at the, the support pay plan, and you'll be able to see the positions that we're talking about, that we're going to be, that they're recommending that we should move to a different pay scale because of the discrepancy in, not discrepancy, but the gap in the pay. So as you can see here, the different, you're, you're able to see the comparison at, from the current midpoint, average market value, the district pay and the proposed midpoint there, and the, in different positions here. But I want to go ahead and draw your attention to page forty, go to page forty, here you have the histogram, right, you have, you're able to see by pay, by pay grade, right? And, and I guess let's, let's go back, let me retract, because let me go ahead and show you the pay compression that we were talking about, because if we don't make the adjustments that, at some point, if we don't make the adjustments that Dr. Samora was talking about earlier, we will have some form of pay compression, as you can see right here on this particular slide, you see on pay grade three, right here, you see how we have some, our individuals right here, where they're so close to each other... other in regards to the different, the pay, the pay that, the pay plan that we have them in, and how closely they're together, we're, we're going to be having that pay compression. So we need to start making those adjustments and start making the adjustments soon, soon, based on the recommendation that they're giving us, right? So that's very important for us to consider. So I just wanted to show that in more of a, a visual. Okay? Same thing in pay grade five, right? Right here.
So what they're recommending is that we, like, start to spread them out?
That is correct. Uh-huh, that is correct.
I thought it was more concerning to address the ones that are out of the box.
That's what I, that's what I understood, too.
Well, both are. They're both. We, we have several, you know, not, I don't want to say concerns, but there's several things that we do need to address. The ones that are out of the box, and the ones that, for example, in pay grade five, pay grade five and some in six, that we need to, and then the adjustment from two all the way to five, which, that's what we are saying, that there's that adjustment of the 1.5% that we need to start making, and start making, taking those, those recommendations and start make, implementing them as, as soon as possible. That way, we could start seeing, we don't start seeing that, that pay compression.
And what would be, Dr. Verdel, the rationale for looking into the ones inside the box, like the ones you said?
Because, again, their, their pay is so close together, right? That we need to go ahead and start making that adjustment. We, and again, Dr. Samora made some, a, a point earlier regarding the, and it was more of the teacher's salary, right? But same thing goes back to the actual, when we're looking at the instructional assistance, right? And when we're making that, that adjustment, we need to make sure that we're making the adjustment based on recommendation, based on the, the, what is it? Based on the recommendation that we're, that, we're always seeing the, a change of a 2.2% to 2.5 based on the market, right? So we have to make sure that when we're doing that, that that, we do that to, we do that within the district, but we're also needing to make sure that when our people are coming in new to the district, that we, that we make that adjustment, but that we're not starting them off based, we're not starting them off as high as everybody else, because then that's, that's something, that's what's, what's occurring is that we're starting up, which is okay to start them up high, but that we're also adjusting everybody else in the other categories. And if we don't do that, what's happening is, we have individuals in the other categories that are making much less than the ones that are coming in new. And that's what starts up that pay compression in itself. So we need to be making adjustments throughout.
Okay. So for example, on page 39, let's just take pay grade two.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that little, you know, the little group that's bunched up, which is the one you're referring to. Does that refer to page 40, pay grade two, the, the positions that are listed here?
Page 39?
39 shows that there's a whole bunch of people.
Correct.
On pay grade two, right?
Yes.
And then on page 40, pay grade two, the positions are listed. So are these the little dots over here?
Yes. Yes, yes, it is.
And I think that what Dr. Benavides is saying, and what I wanted to make a point about, so you got me to page 40. Good.
Page 40, yes.
Is that, how we determine whether the person enters at the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum makes difference. And so, that's one. The other one is, what, what does it take for an individual who starts at minimum to really move to the maximum? Because even though we're saying there's a, a range there, if individuals start at 22,000, or let's say, I'm going to start at the very top, 21,000, but we're only increasing their salary 1% or 2% a year, they'll never get to the, I mean, well, sometime down the road, they'll get to 30,000, but it'll be quite a while. And so, my question is, what does it take for an individual to really move from minimum to midpoint to maximum? What, what do we have in place to make those determinations? What's that?
Years' experience.
Years' experience.
But it's years' experience.
But the years' experience coming in, they can come in at midpoint or minimum.
Yes.
When it comes to salary, they've been in the position, but not the person.
Correct.
The only barrier is, when it comes to salary, is the employee's experience. So that's what you have to do, for those experience that are coming in without any experience. And, and even the experience that they bring in, they grow into the position. So once they get to the midpoint, that is an employee that's been in the position for quite a while. I apologize. So, the salary skill is written that way, so that as an employee comes in, new into the position without any experience, it would traditionally start at the minimum point. And as they progress and grow in experience, they climb that salary scale up until they get to the midpoint.
Right.
And then they gradually go up into the maximum. So, when employee gets to the maximum, that's usually an employee that's been in the position a very long time.
So, I remember, you might want to check to see what you're doing now, but it was easier for somebody coming from the outside to get a percentage increase than if they were getting promotions from within the district. So some of them would say, well, I would rather go out and then come back in, because I can start at a higher point than if I am getting promoted from within the district. And if that is going on, I would suggest that we go back and take another look at it.
And I know that when an employee's transitioning from one pay grade to another, within our pay scales, one of the considerations that is given is that they get a, a certain percentage of increase, I think at 1.03%, when they're moving from one pay grade to another.
And then there's a limit in terms of how much they can increase, and that's what I'm saying. If they're coming from the outside, they have an opportunity to start at a higher point than if it is movement from within the district.
The other key word in the experience is relevant experience.
That is correct.
And sometimes, when adjustments are made, and it's not relevant experience, so then that throws the range off, and that's why these are all bunched up together, because we weren't fair in setting the starting salary for someone. We allowed all the experience to count for some, and we didn't allow all the experience to count for others. And so that starts the discrepancies.
And then you have others that just started at a point, because somebody says, get them started there. And I think we need to stop that. We need to follow what we say we're going to be doing.
I, I think that that's really important, that comment, as far as the relevant experience, because you have individuals that are coming in with several years of experience, but the type of experience that they're coming in with is the key, the key point, right?
And you understand, my concern is that once they get started at a certain point, then it's hard for them to reach the maximum, for those that started at the bottom.
They never do. They never do.
We just, it's just making sure, I guess, going back, like you say, Dr. Samora, and just making sure that we are, that we're equal, and we're fair to everyone, and not look at some and not others.
Correct.
Relevant experience. And I, for the record, I just want to point out, Mr. Cantu joined us at 6:44.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on. What I did want to point out is here on pay grade six. So we talked about the individuals or the positions, right? On pay grade six, right here, as you can see, we have the accounting clerk, account payables clerk, payroll clerk, the, these individuals, along with a specialist for employee insurance benefits, specialist for certi, certifications, and the purchasing specialist. These six individuals or positions, right, are being recommended to be moved to a pay grade six based on the, the pay that that position currently is being paid.
Where are they now?
So right now, they're at a pay grade five.
So this is already their new, their new position? And is that be, is that based on the market value?
Yes, that is correct.
So that's what the little arrows mean on the side?
Correct.
That they were moved up.
Yes. And as you can see, they're already placed in a pay grade six, listed there, and you see that they're, they have the five there, indicating that that's where they were before. Okay? And that's the, based on this study.
So for clarification purposes, going back to what you were saying, Mr. Munoz, go back to the previous page.
Uh-huh.
So if it's based on years' experience, for teachers, we have a salary schedule that says, based on years' experience, it's where your salary is. Is that something that could be considered? And if not, why not do the same, similar thing with these positions? Why we're saying it's based on the years' experience?
I, I, the, the way it's calculated right now, Dr. Samora, as, as an employee comes in, we do have personnel there in human resources that screens new, as they're being onboarded, they'll ask them, how many years' experience do you have in this position or doing this? And they're the ones that will credit that years' experience. There is variance, depending on the employee that's interviewing the, the oncoming employee. But that is the process that they follow.
So when there's a, a move from one year to the next, they get a years' experience gained, plus whatever else the district is adding to their salary?
That is correct.
Okay.
And who makes the decision, Mr. Munoz? Like, the final decision?
We have, we have HR coordinators that do the onboarding. As they're doing the onboarding interview, they'll ask them, how many years' experience do you have, what certifications do you have, and how long have you been doing this, this work?
But is it like one person, or is it a team?
We have three, one per cluster.
Thank you. Now let's go ahead and move on to the next slide. On this one, it's the instructional support comparison. And on this one right here, you, now we have five positions that are being listed. And again, this is the instructional support. As you can see, you have the instructional assistant, and also the instructional assistant for self-contained, computer proctor, LVN, and then the instructional assistant for special ed resources listed here. And you have the top two positions there, that, they're just a little bit past the 12% here, okay?
The fact that we increased the instructional assistant salaries based on the number, based if they had college hours, I'm sure that's what impacted that 14% and, what is it, 13?
Yes. And that's what I was going to share. In the next slide here, what you see is, again, this is the midpoint, and you're going to be able to see the same thing in the minimum, right? And overall, keep in mind that our pay grade, under pay grade four, we have the instructional assistants that have an associate, that's where they fall. And then under pay grade five, we have the instructional assistants that have a bachelor's, that's where they fall, right? And then those individuals that have their hours, their 45 hours, those individuals fall under the pay grade two. So again, this is a group of individuals, when we're looking at this, is in general, not just one individual. So that's why, when you're looking at this, that's, that's the end result. And again, you're looking at this, and, and actually, it looks really good, right? So, based on, when we're doing the comparison based to the market. And so that says a lot about our district. And again, it serves as a recruitment effort, right, and a retention, a retention effort as well. So that's, good, you're looking at the midpoint. And then right now, you're going to see that, when we're looking at the minimum, it's also above that 100%. Now you're able to look at the minimum compared to the market as well, it's at 104%.
Just that it's probably the area where we're closest to, overall, with the market.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay. And again, you're able to see it here, in this particular, a particular graph here. That looks really, really good there. And then, again, you have the proposed pay, you're able to see it here as well, there's a couple of positions there above. And again, there's several things that we would have to focus on, like we had just talked about, people within and people outside, right? And we'll bring you the recommendations at one of our next work sessions. And then you have the actual pay plan here, right? And how that looks. You have the minimum, the mid, and the max. And one of the things that I did want to add here is that we no longer have a pay grade one, like we did before, because, again, that position was the computer proctor position, and we no longer have the position anymore. And then here, you just have the instructional support placement scale.
You go back to the previous one.
Right here?
Were our pre-K programs and, we have instructional assistants in the pre-K program?
Yes, we do.
So we have them in three, four, and five-year-olds?
We have in the PK three and PK three, PK four classrooms.
So, do we have a differentiation, or are they all the same?
They're all the same, Dr. Samora, as far as the pay.
Are they, are they included here somewhere?
Yes, they're right there. Instructional assistant, pre-K. It's in the middle of pay grade two.
Mm-hmm.
Second one. Let me move on, ma'am.
So let's go ahead now and look at the auxiliary staff. We're looking at the auxiliary staff and the market analysis. Just the positions that were surveyed, 3% are below the market median, then the pay range midpoints are even with the market at 100%. Now the pay range minimum are 3% above the market. The market comparison for two jobs paid more than 20% above the market, that were also excluded from the group average. And just looking at the proposed increase adjustment on bullet number, let me see, five, on that one right there, just, they're asking us to apply placement scale adjustments to align employee pay by 15 years of experience to midpoint for all employees. So that's something that I know that we would be working with, Ms. Luz Calina from Taspi, if that's something that we decide to do, that way we can make sure that it's equitable across the board. So questions? If not, that way we could go ahead and proceed. And again, now you have the comparison to market when it comes to the auxiliary staff. And as you can see there, we do have several positions that we're looking at, and some are individual and some are groups, right? And if you're looking at the first, let me see, two, three, four, five positions there, you're able to see that it's above 12% from 12 all the way to 29%, right? And then, otherwise, the rest are okay. From the zero to, to the right, right there, right? We have five positions that we would consider. Now, from 0% to the left, you're able to see that we have three positions there that we would look into and consider. Okay?
Is that including their overtime, such as supervisor transportation?
That does not include overtime. We would look into that, but it does not include overtime.
And this was done when we had, for example, the three wastewater operators, and now I think we may have one.
That is correct.
So that might have taken care of this 17, minus 17%. Mike?
I am depending on.
Who it was at stake.
Salary of that.
That is correct. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide. Looking at the, this one where we have the data to support. So when we're looking at the data to support right here, one of the things that we do wanna consider is, and I do need to make the statement because there were some adjustments that were made to the bus drivers, but this data was captured before the adjustments that were made. So that's something that we do need to, that we do need to consider as well. Because the board did approve some adjustments to be made to our bus drivers and this data was captured before that. Okay? So again, this data supports what we just saw in the previous slide. You're able to see the midpoint on this particular slide. And one of the things that we would like to point out would be here on this particular positions, we would look at, for example, everybody that's above the, like for example, we've got line number four, we've got certain positions like line number 24 and so on, line number 19 and so forth. But one of them is right here, line number eight, but you know, that's something for us just to consider. And then we have the, again, this continues, but overall, the district comparison to the market, we are at, if you look at this, at 97% the district rate compared to the market. And then the pay range midpoint compared to the market is at 100%. So overall, we're not that, we're actually doing pretty good there.
Clarification, ma'am?
Yes.
The adjustments that were made in comparison to the data that's here, what came first?
So-
You said adjustments were made.
Yes, some adjustments were day, were made, Dr. Samora. The data that was submitted, was submitted back in December, like it was submitted before the adjustments were, were made to the bus drivers.
Okay, just to the drivers?
Just to the bus drivers.
Not any of the other positions that have been moved around?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, Dr. Villarreal, if we could submit that adjustment so that they could fix this?
Yes.
So that we know that, we know where they are right now?
The accurate information.
Right? Can, so can we do that?
Yes. So now moving on. On page 56, you're able to see the, the actual graph there. And you're able to see that the graph right here where it shows the current midpoint average market value and the district and then the proposed as well. And, and again, it would be important for us to be able to see how it looks now once we submit the data for the bus drivers, because as you can see right there, we have, you're able to see that our average district pay for the drivers is, it still needs some improvement based on the data that, that was submitted, right? But we need to look at what the difference would make now based on the adjustments that we, that we have done.
Have we looked into the police officers? I see that they're, they're way below, well, not way below, but market value. I saw that they have kinda like the same rate as a plumber. Have we looked into their pay?
We haven't, Mr. Cantor, but that's something that this study helps us with and there's certain positions that we've been talking about that we have to look into. Thank you for your input. Okay. So now we have the proposed pay versus the proposed structure right here, the same concept as we've been discussing, right? Making sure that we look at positions that are above, at, above the graph right there, the squares, and actually the ones that are showing some kinda compression as well and that we could have conversations and bring a recommendation. And again, here on this one, one of the things that I do wanna go ahead and point out, let's see, on, and that's basically our auxiliary staff and, but going on to, let's look at our models really quickly and just so you'll see that if and when we do look, if we decide to go with model one and we make the adjustments that we talked about, just based on TASPI's recommendation and make the adjustments that we had talked about, one of the things that we wanna go ahead and look at is on model number one, which is the 2%, right? It's asking us, let's look at this right here. If we were to make adjustments to the years 10 and 15, there are 65 individuals would be affected, right? And it's telling us that it would be a difference of 37,436. And again, that's just something for us to consider. And the adjustments was, those $300, I believe that they were telling us for the year 10 and year 15, right? What I do wanna go ahead and draw your attention to is on here administrative support, right? The place scale adjustment that we were talking about and the different positions that it was, would affect, it would affect that 90 positions, right? So to, that we could go ahead and make those adjustments. And this is how, what it would cost the district. 128, 1,800, 680,000, I mean 128, 680,000, right? So that's what it would cost us. And then on instructional support, you, you see, again, you have the pay scale adjustment and you're able to see the cost for the district, which is for 107 staff members, you see the cost for the district as well. And then you have for the auxiliary, you have the payment placement scale adjustment and it's 272 individuals and you see the cost for the district. So again, it's broken down for us depending on if and when we decide to go with any, we decide to go with this proposed plan, right? That they're recommending. It's a 2% proposed plan. And then we also have model two, which is the 3%, right? So it's, it's really, it's, it's up to us, right, to you all, but we'll be bringing you all a recommendation at some point during one of the budget work sessions.
Does it have to be planned as a whole or can we take it by auxiliary and administrative support and?
So we'll, we'll go ahead and, and bring you a couple of recommendations and then you, we'll take it from there, Mr. Ruda, so we can plan it out.
It can be, it can be separate categories.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll work some things-
Thank you, Dr. Villarreal.
Yes. And any additional questions, feel free to let us know and we'll go, we could go ahead and bring it back to you all in the next work session.
It's not a question, just a request and we've made it. I just don't wanna forget for us to review the teacher incentive allotment and the, where we are with those procedures so that our teachers don't get caught like they did this year without having to, being able to qualify for that incentive.
Yes. We do have the teacher incentive allotment committee that has been evaluating all the data and making recommendations. And we'll bring that to you. Thank you, Dr. Benavides.
Absolutely. So we could go ahead and transition to the next item, Dr. Science?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Villarreal.
Thank you, Dr. Villarreal, again. I know it's a lot of information you've presented us with, but, and it's a lot that we have to analyze this, the first time we see this as well. So, but it's very useful because it's gonna help us ensure that we're fair and equitable to all, to all individuals for all positions. So thank you so much again.
And so if there are no more questions, we can go on to the next item under budget work session number one, which is review and discussion of 2023, 2024 staffing allocation guidelines for schools. Yes, thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead now and transition into the staffing allocation guidelines. And for this afternoon, we're gonna go and go over the campus allocations and that would be for elementary, middle, and high school and also for our specialty schools. So we're gonna start with the elementary. And what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna go ahead and review the items in green and then I'm also gonna go over the teacher-student ratios. So we look at line number seven for the elementary, as you can see right there. When we're looking at the teacher enrichment enhancement teacher, this, this position is gonna go ahead and be closed. Students will be serviced through their grade level, one of the grade level teachers. So again, this teacher, it will be trained or is trained in anything having to do with GT. If we move on to the nurses' aid, which is, before I do that, let me go ahead and review items 12 through 8, 18, and those are actually the classroom ratios. So we look at number 12, line number 12, which is teachers in pre-K, English, and dual standalone classrooms. The class ratios are 18 to 1. And then if you include the instructional teacher, the instructional assistant, excuse me, you're talking about 18 to 2. And again, this is for PK three, English, and dual classrooms standalone. Looking at line number 13, PK three, PK four, multi-age classrooms, you're looking at 18 to 1 for teacher and instructional assistant, so actually it's an 18 to 2. So that is the classroom ratio right there. Now, line 14, PK four, you're talking about 18 to 1, student-to-teacher ratio plus their instructional assistant as well. Teacher in kindergarten, right there, you're talking about 22 to 1, student-to-teacher ratio. They do not get an instructional assistant. So line number 17, teachers second through fourth grade, we do have a class ratio of 22 to 1, student-to-teacher ratio. At line 18, fifth grade teacher, you have 25 to 1, student-to-teacher ratio. So that basically, you're talking about the classroom teachers and student-to-teacher ratio right there. Now we could go ahead and move on to line number 23 and we're looking at the-
Before we leave the instruction?
Uh huh.
Going back to line seven?
Line seven, uh huh.
How many teachers do we currently have as GT teachers that would be affected by this reduction?
Yes, we currently have 11 teachers right now that are being shared at the elementary.
Okay, so are they hearing it now for the first time or have they been informed?
No, they, they've known ever since we went from 22 teachers to being shared, they've known that this is something that was gonna be occurring. And this change actually started at the beginning of this school year, if I'm not mistaken. And so you're proposing that we do not have any? So this is something that, again, was looked into earlier during this year and yes, it's something that has been looked into and has been communicated to the teachers since the beginning of the school year. Yes, so the proposal is that we close the 11 current teachers.
So it would not be having a pullout, if you wanna call it that, resource, room for GT?
That is correct. What, currently what is being proposed is one teacher from the, within the grade level that has the, the training, the 30 hours, right?
Not one per grade level? You're not proposing one per grade level?
Well, that one of the classroom teachers, current teacher, would be servicing those students during, time during the day.
So will all of the students then be grouped in that one classroom for the whole day?
It would be more of a pullout program?
No, it would, do you wanna talk a little bit about that, Mr. Munoz?
Sure, so the, the current plan right now, because we have, we're working with a lot of teachers, we have continued with the pullout program. Teachers are being shared with two campuses, they report to one campus in the morning and then they go to the other campus in the afternoon, so they're servicing the kids throughout the school day. For the, for next year, what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue with our pullout program. But within the, the schedule, we will have an enrichment enhancement period where kids will be regrouped and one teacher per grade level will be working with our GT students. That one teacher will, will be trained in, in the GT program.
So it'll be, your grade levels will be staggered from morning till the afternoon and you'll have a-
That is correct, Dr. Samora. Each, well, the grade levels do have a staggered enrichment enhancement period to facilitate the supporting staff to be able to provide support, like the example reading specialists, the special ed teacher.
So, so your enhancement or your enrichment and remedial prevention type intervention period is all at the same time for that one grade level?
It's staggered. It is staggered throughout the day.
Per grade level?
To allow the support staff to be able to provide support to the different grade levels without having to remove students from their tier-one instruction. During that period of time, the, the students will be regrouped and the teacher that is trained and designated to be the GT teacher will pull out those students and provide the, the GT instruction.
So do we still have a requirement that, that be done across all, by all teachers?
As far as the number of hours that-
The training?
No.
As it is right now, we are not mandating that all teachers get trained. The requirement right now is the teachers that will be providing the GT service receive the training.
And they'll be getting a stipend for that or?
That is, that is a consideration. I think we will be discussing it further. As it is right now, most of our teachers that are gonna be designated to be the GT teachers have received the training, but that is under consideration.
Mr. Munoz, in your opinion, are these GT students gonna be receiving better services now or?
I would say that it would be comparable because again, it's gonna be a pullout program, just like similar to what we have right now. Kids are gonna be getting pulled out from within 30 minutes to 45 minutes every day and they will be receiving their GT classes.
And you're, I mean, I don't wanna get into programmatic things, but then in terms of students being served, are they going to be the same students all the time or will they be rotated or?
They, during that enrichment enhancement period, Dr. Samora, the, the kids that qualify for the GT program will be working together with-
So you still have to go through the eligibility criteria and all?
That is correct. That is correct. We, just like, very similar, not almost the same to what we currently have right now. The only difference is the way we are gonna be approaching the staffing component.
Is this teacher also responsible for the testing?
That is, again, one of the considerations that we're gonna be discussing when it comes to that additional compensation.
Yes.
We will be deciding as to how we're gonna be approaching the assessment because these are gonna be Janet teachers that do have a regular, a regular classroom that have to plan for regular instruction as well. So we're gonna be looking at as to how we can facilitate and alleviate that additional responsibility that the teachers will have.
Okay, now moving on to line 12 and 13.
Yes.
Pre-K threes and pre-K three, pre-K four, multi-age. So dual language, now we're going to be doing that in combination with Head Start. Do you work those details out?
So as far as a PK three, PK, and we have a different section for the Head Start program, Dr. Samora, so in a little bit, we'll be reviewing the actual Head Start program in a little bit. So if you want, we could wait until the Head Start and if you have questions?
That's fine, that's fine. I just wanna make sure and then when you have multi-aging, are we, do we have multi-age students, three and four-year-olds in a classroom?
And, and that's gonna be if needed because really the way the PK three program should work is that it has to be standalone. So if and when we have to make a multi-age, then we'll do a multi-age classroom. I know that this coming year, that's really what we're gonna strive for, is that we have standalone classrooms because that's how the program was intended to work.
How many classes do we have, just the pre-K three?
As of right now?
Just itself, yes.
We, it's very few classes that we have a standalone. And as far as standalone, I would say that we have at Zapata, we have at Tabasco, we have at Gonzalez. It's very few campuses that have standalone classrooms for PK three. So that's what I'm saying, that this coming year, we're gonna, that's strive to have PK three standalone classrooms.
Thank you.
Moving, any additional questions?
Pre-K fours do not get a teacher's, an instructional assistant then?
They will be getting in- They will be getting instructional assistants, Dr. Samora. It's just broken down over here in the bottom on line 24, 25...
I just didn't see it like I did in 12 and 13.
It's written, it's written a little bit differently, but they're on line 27 and 28.
And I can mention this, because I do have a daughter in PK3, but the instructional assistant is a big help when you have staggered ages, three and four-year-olds in there. It's a big help.
I question, would we be, how realistic is that we will have an instructional assistant in every classroom?
It's, again, we are gonna be striving to have that instructional assistant, and if not, then we'll be providing that substitute. So we wanna make sure that we provide those. I know that this year, what we did is, again, HR did a good job trying to provide those assistants, and if not, then they provided a substitute. We're aiming at ensuring that we staff everybody accordingly. I know that campus principals do a really, really good job of building relationships with our substitutes and making sure that they have those permanent subs that they could rely on. So that, we know that recruiting effort is something that we need to continue to work on.
So 18 to 1, three-year-olds is a lot, or four-year-olds?
Yeah.
Or?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I spoke to a principal today, because even now, it's like, I mean, her teacher-to-student, the teacher-to-student ratio, along with the instructional assistant, it's just, it's outrageous, right? So we were working on making another class, or adding an additional instructional assistant. Really, it's, we need to make another class. And it's, and it's April, right? So, yes.
Yes, but it's extremely, even more difficult in the multi-age classrooms.
Any additional questions? Moving on to our nurses' aides, as you can see right there, on line 23, we're saying closed by attrition. As of right now, they are gonna be shared at some campuses, and we're doing by lowest enrollment and also by needs, right, student needs. And any questions in regards to that?
Just curious, how many were still here?
Yeah.
So that's a good question, right? For the elementary, right now, we have, overall, we had 20 that are still here, right? For the elementary, as of right now, we have a total of 14, right, that we're gonna go ahead and use. And then which, from those 14, we have eight that are gonna be shared, and then six that are gonna be standalone. Okay? Questions as far as that?
What were the original count that we had?
So we had a total of 20, 'cause we had two, around 22, around there?
So the difference?
I think it was 24. It was 16 at elementary and eight.
Yes, 16 and then eight, so 24.
So we had 24, and then two had resigned, and we have two that wanted to stay at their...
We have two that wanted to stay in the original position.
So we have 20 to work with.
Yes, you're correct.
20 to work with, so eight shared and six standalone?
In elementary.
In elementary.
And the others were gonna be probably middle school?
In middle school. Now, review those numbers in a little.
Okay.
Yes.
And what is the status right now, Dr. Viadell, of our nurses', our nurse assistants?
Yes, as far as the nurse assistants, I know tomorrow, we have a principals' meeting. We're gonna share the information with the principals. I know our coordinators called and made contact with our nurse assistants yesterday, just to make sure, because we were receiving emails from a couple of, we did receive emails from a couple of nurse assistants, asking to see if they could stay at their original positions. So again, we made contact with our nurse assistants, just to see, did they wanna stay at their original positions? And they...
Their new assigned positions?
Their new assigned positions, right? And the rest said that they wanted to be moved, right? And obviously, just like with everything, we get used to our original home campus, right? So as a department, we're doing, we were doing our best to keep them at their original, to place them back at their original campus. But as you, I just gave you the numbers, right? We have to go ahead, and there's some that are gonna be affected, that are gonna have to be shared. So keeping in mind enrollment, keeping in mind the fact that student needs, and then also, we also kept in mind as far as proximity, keeping all those factors in place. Then we went ahead and looked at where they would be placed. So going back to the original question too, is how are principals gonna go ahead, and how are we gonna communicate this, and where are we at? So we're gonna be communicating to our principals tomorrow at the principals' meeting, and then after that, we're gonna be contacting our nurses' assistants, and then that way, they could go ahead and start at their assignment on Monday.
I was just gonna ask, when is their starting?
That's what I was asking. And then we are going to have some classrooms that do not have an instructional assistant. And so then, that's gonna be our next task.
Yes.
But the important thing with these assistants is, number one, that they have their job.
Yes.
I mean, you just have to assign them where the need is.
Right. So we're keeping all of that in mind and working with the principals as well about making sure that we cover the vacancy as well that our nurse assistants, because of the assignment, right, where they're gonna be moved, what are we gonna do with that other vacancy, and our principals are working with us. And we're gonna make sure that that gets taken care of as well. Okay? So let's go ahead and move on to the next page. And here, we have on line 34, we have the UTRGV teacher residency program. And here, as you can see right there, we have 10 student-teachers that are gonna be able to assist certain campuses. The campuses are identified there, which is Saguín, Clinton, Garza, Zapata, and Leo. And we're gonna have two individuals that are gonna be helping at each of these campuses. And the focus is gonna be the special ed classrooms, okay? And they're gonna be assisting for three days out of the week. And after four weeks of being here in the district, we could actually utilize some as substitutes as well. So that's gonna be beneficial for the district.
But these resident teachers, it doesn't impact the ratio of teachers that they're getting? This is in addition to?
This is in addition to. This is in addition to. Okay. Then, moving on to number 39, on here, this position, library clerk. As you all know, this is a position that is closed, was closed due to attrition. Bless you. And then line 41, computer proctor, this position was also, is gonna be closed, proposed to be closed due to the staffing adjustment plan. Okay? Questions? If not, that way, we could go ahead and transition to the middle schools. So if we move on to the middle schools?
Did we skip the Head Starts?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Did I? Yes, I did.
The page before that.
That's page four, on page four. So we go to page four. On page four, here, what we have is, for the staffing allocation for Head Starts, what we have is, as you can see right here, what's being proposed is that on line one, that we close the position for the principal, and also for the assistant principal, on line two. Now, as far as the PK3 teacher, and also for the student-to-teacher ratio, you're looking at 17 to 1. And then we have the PK4 classroom, right? The ratio would be 20 to 1. And then they would also have a PK, for the PK3, we would have a teacher assistant, which would be, the ratio would be 17 to 1 here, right? And then PK4 instructional assistant, the ratio is 20 to 1. Okay? Now...
Those are the district's teachers?
This is actually the district, the district teachers here.
Not the Head Start teachers. Those are teachers?
Yes. As far as the Head Start teachers, the way it works is, the model that was presented was a total of 440 students total, 22 classrooms, right? So as a district, we would provide 11 teachers, right, and then 11 instructional teachers. And then you would have Head Start that would provide 11 teachers, and then 11 instructional assistants. And then they would provide 11 instructional assistants that would help, and they would consider, they're calling them floaters, and they would help our special ed students, identified special ed students in those classrooms. And that's, as far as staffing, that's how it looks.
You bring up the point of special ed and having to serve the three-year-olds also. So we need to plan on that.
Yes, so absolutely. So we're getting that additional help from Head Start, I mean, from Hidal County Head Start.
Maybe right here, just for the sake of documenting and funding, just maybe put maximum 11 total.
We could do that. Yes. Okay. If, let's go ahead, and if you don't have any questions, so then we could go ahead and move on?
Other than asking if the people who's lined out here, do they know of this reduction?
Yes, absolutely. We will be having individual meetings with them, but yes, they have been informed. Moving on to middle schools. If we look at middle schools, we're looking at line number eight right here. So on line number eight, we're looking at Region 1 Gear Up program for 8th grade students. So this, this is the year where our 8th grade students, obviously, it's the end of their last year in middle school, so they're gonna be transitioning up to high school. And so our coordinators for Gear Up will also be transitioning with our kids. They'll be nesting with them, so they'll be heading up to Palm View High School. Okay? So in line number 10, in line number 10, as you can see right there, we have our NCRI teachers. And for our NCRI teachers, the proposal is that we close this position, and then they will be, the NCRI students will be serviced through our reading teachers.
And the Gear Up facilitators, do they, do we keep the same, the three going into the high school? Instead of having just one for high school, then we're gonna have the three?
That is correct.
So the NCRI will be mainstreamed? Is that like...
That's being serviced through the reading teachers, so yeah. So I know that we have, Mr. Munoz, to answer that question.
Those students, Mr. RST, are getting pull-out supports. In the past, we were getting pull-out supports, and we actually had teachers in every middle school. Over the years, the number of NCRI students have significantly decreased, so much so that at far over middle schools, those kids have already been serving, are being serviced already by reading specialists. So currently, we only have four NCRI teachers that we're gonna place in regular classrooms. Right now, in total, in the whole district, we only have 105 NCRI students at the middle schools.
And so moving on here, and I do wanna go over the teacher-to-student ratios from line 11 all the way to 20. But I do wanna just go over the note that's in the box right here in the middle. It says 6th grade FTEs will be allocated in teams of 2, 28 to 1, and then also 25 to 1 at specific schools, which are Dr. Science Middle School, Salinas, Arms, and Trevino. Okay, and it talks about being funded through 211. So now, going back to line 11, teachers in 6th grade ELA, social studies. As you can see right there, we already talked about that teacher-to-student ratio. But if we're looking at math, science, English, 7th grade, I'm sorry, 7th grade all the way to 8th grade, the teacher-to-student ratio for those particular content areas in grade levels, it's 28 to 1. Okay? That's the teacher-to-student ratio for those particular grade levels and content areas. Questions that you might have as far as the teacher-to-student ratio?
That's an area that we had discussed before in terms of teachers per team, or number of teams then that we would have at the middle schools? What's, can you say more about that plan? About the numbers per team and how many teams per middle school?
Some, in some of our middle schools right now, we do have three teams per grade, but in looking at the number of students in each team, we identifies, identified certain grades in certain schools where we could serve the anticipated number of kids going into the grade level in two teams, by two teams, instead of three teams.
So is that why it says here, why it says here, in teams of two?
In teams of two.
They really should say two teams?
Yes. That in 6th grade, teams of two means the ELA and the social studies teacher, and the math teacher, and the science teacher.
Okay.
Yes, that's how it is in 6th grade.
Is there a change with STAR on the writing test, on writing?
Yes.
Because I noticed that you deleted the writing teacher.
Writing is no, will no longer be assessed as a separate test. Now, writing is being assessed beginning in 3rd grade on down to English 2, and it is integrated with a reading test.
Bottom line, they have to be writing in every class.
They have to be writing in every classroom.
Things are changing.
So that was basically line number 22, right? So we're proposing for our writing teachers at the middle school to, that position to be closed due to the STAR redesign, right? And it's due to the new assess, the changes in the new assessment. On number 23, basically, for the migrant lab teachers at the middle school, we're looking at, based on student enrollment, and on this one, we're looking at using three migrant teachers to service our students at the middle school.
So some campuses do not have migrant labs, then?
It's, it's, I know that the number, the enrollment that we're seeing at the middle school, based on the recommendation from our director, we're looking at utilizing three versus four. Right now, they're using a .5, and the recommendation is to use one of the teachers to be used at the high school versus at the middle school based on the enrollment.
I'm just thinking, eight middle schools and three teachers, so how do we balance those out?
Yes.
So some schools will not have one?
Every school, every school would have a migrant lab teacher for a certain time of the day, depending on how many kids they...
So we've got a teacher that will be moving?
Yeah, we'll be roving.
Well, they're already roving, right? There's already, they already have two schools, so there's four.
That is correct. This year, the allocation was four teachers at .5 each, based on the migrant director's recommendation. He wanted to reduce that number to three, and he said that he would be, he would be able to provide the services, comparable services, to the eight campuses with the three. And it would, well, actually, he said that he will be sharing one with a middle school and a high school. So that he would be allocating them based on the enrollment and the need that they would have at each campus.
Three, three, and three.
So now, moving on to line 24. On line 24, the recommendation is to reduce for, looking at the science and health profession campus, to go from two to one teacher. And this is over at Memorial. That's the proposed recommendation. And then going to line 30, for the choir teacher, the recommendation is to move and go to having a choir teacher at every single campus. And that would mean that Chavez Middle School would go from two to one choir teacher.
Why is there, why is there zero at Salinas Middle School?
I know that that was the recommendation from the Fine Arts Department a couple of years ago. So now, we're moving from, going from zero at Salinas to having one at every campus.
And I think for the, when we did this last year and the kids had selected, we had almost no kids that picked choir at Salinas, but a lot that picked choir at Chavez. And so that was for this year. So we're saying back one and one, and we just need to promote choir at Salinas also.
Well, I was, I was there not too long ago, and they have a mariachi program, a choir program?
At Salinas? At Salin, at Salinas Middle School?
J.D. Salinas, and they have a big participation rate when it comes to.
They did it without a choir teacher, so.
Wow. I mean, my kudos to them. They didn't, they were amazing.
But they're getting, they're getting one back because they need to offer choir, and they need to encourage kids.
Well, I mean, you can rename it to mariachi or to.
Yes.
Yeah.
It could be. Okay. So moving on to line 33, and here, we're looking at reducing with the teacher principal of information technology slash bilingual technology. We're going from two teachers to one to the designated STEM and bilingual technology campuses. We're looking at, that affects Garcia, Salinas, Dr. Science, and Trevino Middle School. And then the culture teacher, we're looking at one at Trevino Middle School and one at Memorial Middle School based on student counts. And then if we move on to line 47, we have our library clerk, and that one was closed due to the staffing adjustment plan. And then moving on to the line 48, the nurses' aide. So in the nurses' aide, again, we have a total of six nurses' aide at the middle school, and we have three that are going to be shared and three that are going to be standalone. Okay? That's a total at the middle school. And then line 49, that's being proposed to be closed, and again, due to the staffing adjustment plan, and then the lab monitor. And again, that one's being proposed to be closed and due to the staffing adjustment plan. Any questions to the middle school staffing adjustment? I mean, yeah, staffing allocation. Sorry.
So like writing, we're going to reading in the classroom with ELA?
That is correct.
So we don't have reading now? Well, I was going to say in elementary, do we keep them?
We don't have reading teachers.
But in elementary, do we have the reading specialists?
Yes.
At every campus?
Yes.
Okay? Not this year?
Well, we have the reading dyslexia teacher.
But not a reading per se teacher?
Not a reading, this year, no, because due to the teacher shortage, we did place some of them in classroom. But we, in our allocations, we have for a reading.
Okay, so do, we do have for reading specialists?
Yes.
And then the same thing, but we don't have them at middle school?
At middle school? We do have them at the middle school. We have the reading teacher.
So it's just a computer proctor?
Mm-hmm. So we do have the, it's just a computer proctor. We do have the reading teacher and the dyslexia teacher at the middle school.
We can go to high school, Dr. Villanueva.
Okay. So moving on to the high school, we go on to the high school. On line number six, as you can see there, that's just a title change. On line number six, we have going from Director for TSTEM to Director for Ford NGL slash PTEC, and that's at Juarez and Palm View. On line number 17, it's just depicting the fact that we're moving the coordinators in, from eighth grade for Region One gear up to now to ninth grade and over at Palm View. And now going on to line 26, we have the PEP Life Skills Specialist, and that is being closed due to staffing adjustment plan. And also line 27, as you can see there, the migrant strategist, that was closed due to the, due to attrition. And then moving on to line 30, on line 30, as you can see right there, it's the fine arts coordinator. That one was closed due to the staffing adjustment plan. If we move on to the next page, from line 42 all the way to 47, I just want to go ahead and go over the class size ratios there for student to teacher. Line 42, it's 25 to one for ELA. For science, you're looking at 32 to one. For social studies, you're looking at 32 to one. For math, 32 to one. And then foreign language, you're looking at based on student enrollment. And then 47 for PE slash health, you're looking at a student to teacher ratio of 32 to one. And that's basically the changes, not necessarily changes, but I want to review the teacher to student ratio on that slide. If we move on to the next slide or page, you're looking at number 75, the slide, no, line 75, academic clerk, that was closed based on the staffing adjustment plan. And then number 76, which is the college readiness clerk, that position was closed due to the staffing adjustment plan. And that's basically the high schools. Questions that you might have?
I'm just thinking about the people, student to teacher ratios of 30 to one. It's kind of high. But just thinking then about this type of schedule that we have, do we have a four-period schedule, five, six periods? How many students would a teacher really be responsible for during the day? And then ending up today and say, I've got a grade 150, 180? What are we talking about? Do we know yet?
The comprehensive high schools have a nine-period day. One period is lunch. The teachers have a planning and a conference in the core classes, so that leads.
So how many teaching periods? Instructional?
Six in core.
Six?
Six in core, seven in elective.
So we're looking at 150 to 180 students per teacher?
If we get the student teacher ratios to that level.
And I understand that some classes will not.
Working towards it. We have not managed it, but that's our goal. So yes, if we had the student teacher ratio at that level.
When master schedules are being looked at, and we're looking at requests for the upcoming school year, the number of sections are determined when we look at the number of requests divided by 30 to determine the, the number of sections.
I guess I could make a case for 25 to one in all of them, but just because of my experience with science labs and all 30 to one in a science lab, I don't know what our science labs are built for in terms of the lab and the classroom and size of classrooms and so forth, you know, 30 versus 25.
I was thinking more in terms of their, their scores.
All of that makes a difference.
How they're doing in science and then with that number.
Well, that would apply to mathematics, to all of the core areas.
I recall from our taper report, which is our lowest performing year besides English.
Our Algebra I classes and our biology classes, which I know our, our principals and our master schedulers are very creative in looking at the STAR tested grades and, and scheduling those at lower student teacher ratios than other courses.
Well, what I've observed at times is that because it's 30 to one, we might get one that tests 32 or 33, and it starts inching up because we don't want another. We can't start another section. So they do it up.
Thank you, Dr. Samora.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we done, Dr. Villanueva?
Yes, we're done with the comprehensive high schools, so we could move on to our specialty schools, the early college high schools and specialty schools. And so moving on to page 13, so on page 13, actually, no, we have the itinerant staff. And right here, just looking at our five or four homebound teachers, we do have two allocated. The teacher facilitators, we have nine. And then the behavior support specialist, we do have three. And that hasn't changed. And if we move on to the early college high schools and the Academy, Academy Health Science Profession, on this right here, on these campuses, there weren't any changes that were made. So moving right along, if we go to West Academy, as you can see, due the consolidate, due to the consolidation, we are going to be working on just closing these positions, and that's something that we are currently working as a department. Okay?
I heard you say we will be closing these positions.
Well, we're actually going to be assigning those teachers to where they're needed.
Yes. And, and thank you for that correction, Dr. Science. I know that right now, what we've currently assigned two individuals from this particular campus, and we'll be working on the others as well. As far as the teaching positions, we'll be working on some of those, and we've already identified maybe one more other staff member from this particular campus, Dr. Samora. Thank you for that correction. And moving on to Hope DAEP, there weren't any changes here, so the, the same allocation from the previous years. As you can see right there, you do have the teacher to staff, the student to teacher ratio on line four all the way to line eight. As you can see, for middle school, 15 to one, and then high school, 15 to one, and teacher, the reading teacher, 15 to one as well, and PE, 15 to one as well. And again, this is based on, once we get the students there, we start providing the, the staff. Here he has a, a list of staff members, but if needed, we provide the necessary staff, and it's based on enrollment.
Notice you did say, or you do have here, middle school and high school teachers. So we serve both middle and high school students.
That is correct.
But you don't, it's not designated in terms of what they teach, though. Are they interdisciplinary?
That is correct. They're able to teach the, the middle school and high school.
And what are their certification requirements?
So it, it depends on what we have, we currently have right there is we have teachers that are able to teach middle school and high school. So we have some generalists. We also have first through, we have six all the way to 12th grade based on, on the positions that they're currently teaching there.
But one teacher teaches all subjects?
They do have certification in the area, though.
In the content area. So math, science, we have the math, we have science and ELA. And we also have one in particular for special ed. As well. Yes. One, one in particular for special ed, and the others, we do have one for sci, we have one for middle and one for high school. And again, go ahead, Dr. Samora.
I remember at some campuses that there was elementaries, an individual that would take care of students that might be needing assistance. So do we still have those positions or are they?
No, we don't. We did have it at Betis Elementary at one point.
But not anymore?
No, we don't have that position any longer.
So for elementary students, we do not have?
No, we don't have.
Any such program?
We don't have that, that position any longer. But it wasn't.
We have the ISS instructional assistant.
That is correct.
At every elementary, but we do not have the one teacher in the district that served all kids for alternative placement at elementary.
What happens to a child that gets caught with a controlled substance that is in the fifth grade that needs by law to be placed in a DAEP? What's going to happen with that?
When we, I think as of last year, we did, we looked, and we had not had any in years that we had needed that. So we have not come across that. And so when we do have that one student, we will need to provide that alternative placement, and we'll make arrangements. But when we looked, I think it was up to last, I think, this might be the first year that we don't have it, or it's been two years?
It's been two years.
And when we looked at the history, we had not had any in years.
I'm just bringing it up because there's a popularity with the vaping, and some of the vaping is a controlled substance, and so therefore you may need it.
We may need, and we will work on a plan for the year that that happens.
We already had some.
At your, thank you, Dr. Benavides.
And then, any other questions? Okay. And the last one is on College and Career Center. On this one, there are some changes, as you can see on line two. We do have the, a change on line two, assistant principal, that was added due to program change. And then we also made a change on line five, as you can see right there. We did increase from a point five to one full social worker. So those are the changes there at this particular campus. Well, those are the proposed changes. Okay? And that's for College and Career Center. Questions that you might have?
Not a question, just a, a thought, and I'm sure you thought about it, but just what's going to happen to that Head Start staff, the principal, the assistant principal, the secretary, and the office clerk? I hope you have vacancies across the district where those people can be placed, but I know more and more people are having to be placed in different places. So just be aware.
Yes, absolutely. And as a district, I think that we all, when we're making decisions like this, we all try to be considerate of that, and we're doing our very, very best to try to accommodate our staff as much as possible. Yes. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, I move that we adjourn this work session at 8:01.
Do I need a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All is against?
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned at, what did we say?
8:01.
8:01.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Lot of work behind it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.